Welcome to the February meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Commission. The main topic of tonight's meeting is the proposals for a new zoning code in the FEMA Zone. Just a minute before we talk about that, I want to mention that I think many people know that the town is considering a proposal to change the zoning of a site on County Road 39 from highway zoning to shopping center business to allow development of what's called Takahoe Center. And the Planning Commission has been considering that and has submitted, and I'll be testifying at the next hearing, has submitted a letter to the town board recommending against the change in zone, which we think goes against both the master plan of the village and the zoning we've been trying to put into place in the village center in the last few years. So we've submitted the letter, we will be testifying at the hearing. We think the draft D I S is insufficient and that the change in zone does not really have a good purpose. So with that, I want to sort of talk a little bit about where we are in looking at the proposal that was presented at our last public hearing by Nelson Pope and Voorhees or I should say the recommendations for zoning in the FEMA Zone. And I want to sort of mention, we've been talking on the commission study and want to talk a little bit about both what we've been thinking in terms of process and how the process is working in the village right now, and I know there have been some other comments about that, and then also some thoughts about how the recommendations might be enhanced, and then sort of obtain comments from the audience. I would note that there have been some comments coming into the village through the village website, both from the Southampton Association also from some individuals. So we certainly encourage more people to comment. So just some things we are talking about, and I'll talk it when we're done about sort of the process we'd like to do. It's just some things that we've been talking about and we think would certainly enhance the process. And then maybe we can talk about them and then open it up. Number one, I think one thing that has come across in the study by Nelson Pope is potentially enhancing the standards when there's an application to the building department for a zoning change or a approval of the FEMA Zone. Secondly, is potentially looking at peer review, which some villages do, which when a application comes in, having a panel of experts who can read through it and give their advice to the building department. I think a very important thought we've been thinking about that many villages do and we think might be very helpful here is to have what we're calling, for lack of a better name, an all boards meeting. So when an application comes in to the building department, that will be going to more than one board. So let's say, for example, the application would have to go to both the zoning board and the A R B, that there would be an all boards meeting before the application is considered, so after it's submitted but before it's considered, so that the boards can meet and map out a process. And that does a few things. I think number one, they know what each other's doing, so there won't be sort of the problem of one board acting and not being fully informed what the other board is doing. But secondly, it should be a more efficient process for the applicant because they have a clear path going forward, and it lets the boards, I think, try to coordinate so there is some real consistency in what they're doing. So we think that's an important process. That actually is a process that is fairly common, I would say, and so would probably be a good process here. You know, I think we all think on the commission that given the complexity of the applications, particularly in the FEMA Zone, that more professional advice would be very helpful for the boards because these are much more complicated applications than they were 20 years ago. And particularly in recent years, and particularly at the A R B, there's obviously a large number of applications for them to get through in any meeting. We have noted that the State Historic Preservation Office holds workshops to work with boards in terms of how to apply the historic code in a village, and we think that would be a useful process for this village on an annual basis. You know, one of the things that is not now in our code, and I think we will propose be in our code, is that when there's a significant design change made to an application after it's been approved, that that application go back for further review. And I guess finally, we think there should be enhanced inspections of completed work prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So those are all things that I think we believe would enhance the process, both for the applicant and for the boards, make it more transparent, and I think also make the neighbors feel that they're aware of what's going on. And then let me just go through some early thoughts, and then I want to throw it open both for the commission and the audience, about the recommendations Nelson Pope made. Number one, there have been some comments about whether or not the, I think, I would say starting out, you know, both Nelson Pope and I think the Planning Commission think that the pyramid law is a very useful tool in dealing with some of the issues we've been seeing in the FEMA Zone. There's been some comments about whether the proper, what should I call it?
Sky exposure plan.
The sky plane should be 33 or 45 degrees. So we've asked Nelson Pope, and they're going to do some drawings to look at what the impact of each of those are. They're also going to provide, and I think we'll put these on the village website so everyone can take a look at them, they're also going to provide some drawings that show how the pyramid law works on a narrow lot. It'll take a few of the narrow lots on Meadow and Gin and just show how a sample house would work, so that it's clearer. One thing we've heard a lot, and I think we want to think more about, is whether or not the height restrictions should be different on narrow lots. So whether there should be a differentiation between a wide lot, where the house is going to be in the middle of the lot, as opposed to a narrow lot where the house is closer to its neighbors from a height point of view. Again, we've asked Nelson Pope to look at that and see how that would play out. And then finally, I think in existing houses in the FEMA Zone, which at least two of the comments we received is concerned about existing houses, one thing we've asked Nelson Pope to take a look at is providing more flexibility and incentives for existing houses to be moved, so that when they have to be raised to meet FEMA standards, they in effect can be moved in the lot to try to come as close as they can in compliance with the new zoning. And that's clearly going to be a bigger issue going forward, and we're hoping, and I think also the hope would be that would take pressure off of existing homeowners feeling that they have no choice but to demolish an existing house because it can't meet the terms going forward. So those are all, I think, that a fair characterization of things we've been talking about, and if any of you want to add anything, if not, I'll throw it open to the audience for questions, comments, thoughts.
I thought you summarized it very well. I think that just to add to the peer review process.
Right.
The peer review process would be also to relieve the building department in terms of, so it would not supplement the building department, but the peer reviewer would be from a list of pre-approved licensed professionals with experience in the FEMA zones, and then those professionals would then prepare like a list of objection, initial list of objection, for, and then give it to the building department, such that the building department doesn't start with a blank slate.
It doesn't start with a blank slate.
So they wouldn't start with a blank slate, so they would already have the objection, a review by a licensed professional experienced in that area, so they don't miss, and then they could review, add to it, subtract to it. And it's, many jurisdictions have it, I think it's a great tool.
This is a paid position that would be...
No, it's the licensed professional. I mean, we do it in some jurisdictions, in Connecticut you get $7.50 for it, others you get $500 for it, in Boston you get $1,000 for it, you know, it's...
Let me explain, I think I said what you're asking. So generally, the way it's been done, again, this is just something we're thinking about, and we want comments, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, but certainly, so the way it often works is, so you have a panel, because there may be more than one application coming in at a time, obviously, so it's randomly assigned to people on the panel, and then they're just paid a fee to review the application, in effect, prepare a sheet for the building department that says, these are the things that we find that are missing, or that we're not sure the measurement is correct, or we think it's all fine, or whatever.
You mean a member of the panel, the appointed members of the panel?
It's an outside professional, so it's a planner or engineer or something of the sort.
Yeah, but why don't you just do it like Southampton Town, where you get a checklist, when you go to the billing department, of what you need to apply for, and it's all there.
Right.
You don't have to hire a professional. You go in, they have, the person at the desk can do this, is what you require to do.
No, no, I think, okay, so maybe, let me see if I can, again.
But when you provide to them, like if you have a survey, you provide about height, with height, you have an architect who signs and seals and stamps it, so they're certifying their measurements. You have a survey, that's also signed and sealed, so that's certifying the measurements too. It seems almost redundant to hire somebody when you're going to be, you know, if you had a complete checklist that you have, you know, maybe a more detailed one, then this really isn't one of the elements of the village, as opposed to other...
Right, and I think that's a good comment, and in fact, I think that's one of the things we all feel is that, one thing that would help the process right now is having a, you know, more defined set of what we expect to be submitted, particularly in this case, obviously, an application in the FEMA Zone. And again, these are not definite, you know, this is just things we're throwing out and want to get some comments on. In towns where they have a panel, it's basically to relieve the pressure, and it's been particularly used in towns where there is a high volume of applications. It's to relieve the pressure by basically supplementing the review, so someone else says, okay, look, I've just read through this, submitted to the building department, and I think it's missing extra Y, or I know the measurement says 30 feet, but it doesn't really look like 30 feet to me, or whatever, so.
But my understanding is... But you're making the whole process more cumbersome.
Well, we're not trying to do that, so that's why we are asking for comments.
Are you, let's say you're dealing with the A R B, for instance.
Right.
They, if you look at their agenda, they could easily have 20 houses or projects to review. If a peer reviewer, if you need 20 peer reviewers, or 10, let's say, you're just looking at two, all right, and you have to find who's available to do that, and you have to pay them $1,000 or $2,000 or $700, or whatever it is, per thing, and they have to have the time to do this, you're lengthening the process, you're adding a certain level of subjectivity to the, another level of subjectivity to it, another level of needing to be defended, their choices or opinions to be defended or challenged.
This is not, I take your comments, and these are very good comments, they're very helpful, and again, we're throwing this out to get comments and see if people think it's a good or bad idea. I think, my only comment with these, these are, in least, are not meant to be some subjective comments. This is, is the application complete and accurate?
And also, in this case, the concept is that, yes, there will be a defined list, a better checklist of everything that needs submitted, but the peer review will really be on a FEMA-related design, will not be on the architectural review board, will only be on aspects of that relate to the FEMA, to how they're going to raise the house, where it's going to be located, how it's going to be drained, where the septic systems are, whether the septic systems are going to be above the road levels or below the road levels. It's going to be more like on a technical aspect of what we call the SC24, or the flood proof construction, and that review demands a certain expertise, and we're not sure that the building department really has that expertise. So we think that for those aspects, the building department, we take the application, give it to those professionals, we then would review that, you know, that narrow focus related to the flood proof design.
Or will there not be defined in the zoning that we're proposing?
And then the building department just has to follow the proposal that's in the zoning.
Right, but instead...
So, I mean, if you follow the changes in the zoning, you know, unless it's, unless it's something that's really, can't be handled by what the zoning is proposing, you need a big adjustment, it seems to me that maybe redundant happens.
Or you have an...
It's like a second set of eyes in my mind.
I mean, one other way of doing it, honestly, I think, is to increase the fines and be rigorous about the fines when an engineer submits things that are not accurate, honestly, is to be much tougher about, you know, there's an application in the FEMA Zone, things are done that are not what they should be, and then actually really enforce against that, and that's not always easy, honestly, it's not easy at all.
It's hard to correct afterwards.
Yes, it's very hard to correct afterwards, the other problem, so, you know, if the engineer says something that's not really in compliance, you then end up where the house is not in compliance, and then you're dealing with that afterwards. But I understand the comments, and these are incredibly helpful in terms of your thoughts about that.
But could you, have you talked to, you said that in other places this peer review has been helpful?
Right.
Maybe you could talk to the other places.
Right.
And find out, is it working or how it works? I mean, I don't think, I have no idea how it works, but, you know, they probably, if they're doing it, might.
Right.
And then you could see if they thought it was a pain in the neck, or it was great.
I like the idea that there's just four neighbors and other people in the community, that there's a sense that someone else is looked at.
Right.
So I think it would improve comfort in the whole process.
Well, and it is specific, just FEMA Zone.
Right.
So in there, the checklist that you're referring to is not a blanket checklist for all building applications.
I guess one thing we're trying to do...
Actually, it could be, it should be for all.
It could be.
Yeah, and then you have, that's what they do in other municipalities out here. If you're in a FEMA Zone, then you have additional information you have to provide.
Correct, that's right, that's right. I think one of the things we'd like to do, in whatever way it happens, is make sure, it's not the board's responsibility to make sure all the information is accurate, the board should know that by the time it gets to them, they're not listening to neighbors complaining that the information's not accurate, that they know for certain that what they're seeing is accurate information. And I'm not sure, honestly, that's where things are right now, or at least not what's perceived, so it's very important, I think, going forward, if this is going to work, because we're obviously going to put more obligations, the FEMA Zone that now exists, that everyone feels that the information at least is accurate.
Maybe, one thing I've done, I asked Chick Wories to put together a proposal to bring to the village about us hiring somebody to develop these checklists, so that the package appears, we've talked about this over and over, tried to get the board chairs to get involved, building inspector to get involved, and the attorneys and people just don't have the time to do it, so we need to hire a professional to come in and develop these checklists, and that's what he's supposed to have at the next board meeting for us. And it should be across the board with every application, because you, Woolley Street, for an example, where you get an architect who stamped and signed off on plans saying they met all the village code, and they didn't even take the pyramid law into it, it impacted, it was into, and it was our building inspector, after the building went up, realized that they didn't meet the pyramid law here. So there's things that we have to get out in front of, and it's a mistake that's around there all the time, so.
Right, but that's, and I would emphasize, this is a small piece, I think, I think the thought is to try to make the application process, I guess number one, trying to make sure that it's, that the applicant obviously really understands what they're supposed to present, that the process of review to make sure it's accurate is really before board consideration, not at the boards. It's very, this is a rare circumstance where you have boards who are really spending some of their time arguing over, or hearing arguments over whether what's been presented to them is accurate. That should not be what the board should be discussing, the board should be discussing whether or not it meets the policy goals and the code and other items. They really, that's not what the boards are set up to do, obviously, is to determine whether or not the engineer was accurate or the architect was accurate. So that's what we're trying to take away. And I think the second really important thought here is that when an item is going to more than one board, it's going to be better long-term for the applicant, certainly for the neighbors, and I think very certainly for the village, that there is coordination between the boards and what they're doing. So it shouldn't be that goes to one board, and then the first time that the next board is seeing it is after the other board has already acted, or vice versa. So it just, that seems to us not a rational process, and not the way most places do it.
Your building department right now can't even tell an applicant whether or not something needs to be first reviewed by a planning board and then go to the zoning board, or vice versa, or, and that's in particular in commercial districts. And with regard to residential districts, if a building needs a variance, it still was able to get A R B review before necessarily it has zoning approval.
Right.
And there's nothing right now that short circuits an application, for us, if an application came in for the A R B, it really, if it needed a variance, it would not get A R B review until it had approval to get the variance that it needed. Then it could be considered for the aesthetics.
Right, but what would happen in most towns is that someone from the A R B and someone from the zoning board, for example, I'm just using those examples, would sit down and say, okay, we had this application coming in, and this is what we're each going to do, and this, so we each know what the others are looking at. So it's not that, you know, these are completely set, now, obviously, each board has its own power, its own vote, and they may decide, you know, they'll decide whatever they decide. But usually, the way it works in most towns is the two boards talk, and so they know sort of what they're trying to, they're both trying to accomplish, it's not necessarily in conflict with each other, let me put it that way.
But is that for every application?
No, no, certainly, certainly in the...
Who's the gatekeeper?
When you say who's the gatekeeper, that's your question.
Right, I mean, if an application comes in, shouldn't the gatekeeper be the building department?
Correct, yes, yes, absolutely.
And there should be, you know, the person taking it in...
Right.
Should be able to determine whether or not such a board review is necessary, or whether it can go directly to A R B or zoning or planning, whichever is required.
But that would be part of actually the review, the peer review would actually be part of it. They would actually, during that peer review process, it would be part of the list of objection that the other professional would look at and say, here, well, this does not meet the pyramid law, this does not meet the various setbacks, this doesn't, so that's where, and then it would turn it over to the building department, the building department reviews it, and if they concur it, then they say, no, this application needs to go first to the Z B A before it goes anywhere else.
I see what you're saying.
Are there any other comments on process?
I don't know of any other board out here, or any other township in Southampton Village out here that does what you're saying with regard to talking beforehand. There's usually a process, there's a checklist, you may say, one of the checklists might say, have a sheet showing conformance with the pyramid law, you show that sheet, just call it out, as opposed to having a peer review. I mean, right now it's difficult enough, we have, this A R B has been canceled now twice, which means we now have a backlog of over two months' worth of applications now that are backlog, and that's just getting through A R B. I think, I don't think a peer review is necessarily the way to go, I think a more detailed checklist, and maybe even more detailed in a FEMA Zone, would be very helpful.
Okay.
I think you might also find that different professionals have different views on how to do things, so if you have something...
I think you might find that.
That, you know, your engineer and your architects have designed something in a certain way, and now the peer review guy's going to come in and now they're going to redesign it again, they may not agree.
It's actually, I mean, honestly, I hear the comments about the peer review, but that has nothing to do with the way a peer review process works whatsoever. So peer review process is literally, I'm looking at this, I don't think it's 30 feet, it looks like 32 feet to me, please, please, please confirm, or, you know, I'm looking at this and I, and I think it...
Can I finish, please?
And I think it needs to, it needs to go to the Z B A. Now, the billing department then gets, and I'm not, we may decide, peer, 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 peer review doesn't make sense, I'm not, I'm not saying one of, but then he goes to the billing department, the billing department says, okay, I understand what you say, I either agree or disagree, and gives it to the applicant, and the applicant has that shit. It's just a way, honestly, in towns that do it, it's just a way to get, to actually try to get the applications through the process as fast as possible, by relieving the burden at the billing department. That's all it's about. It's not about opinion, it's not about, you know, someone else's view of design, it's literally someone else who has a lot of, and particularly in the FEMA Zone, and I think our concern is really, that's probably less the issue, in the FEMA Zone, the engineering is getting so...
Complex.
Complex, that I think it's actually very hard for someone who's not an expert to really look at it, and it's clearly going to get even more complex in the future. So my guess is, the way this would work, and again, I'm not sure we'll do it, but if we were to do something, if one were to do something like that, I doubt there's going to be a lot of, I'm assuming most, hopefully are being honest, that when it's 30 feet, it's really 30 feet, but I think where it's going to really come into play is in the FEMA Zone, where people are proposing how they're dealing with septic issues and flooding issues and other issues, and those are much more complicated.
I'm confused. The plans you submit are scalable, which means they scale up to 30 feet wherever you submit. Are you insinuating that the people are not building to what they're getting approval for?
We don't know, but I think, I think...
And that's...
Right, or that the submission, or that the certification may not be what it really should be.
Right, right, right.
You know, I mean, you can't take every...
But that's what, yeah, that's a fault of the building.
Now, the builder, the builder, there have been instances where builders have made onsite decisions to make changes in plans that have been already approved. The architects have done a good job, they've met everything, and a builder will do an onsite change.
Right, but the peer review doesn't affect that.
Well, the peer review, you could look at a peer review or a plans reviewer that we hire as a professional to come, we use 40 Meadow Lane as a perfect example. You know, we've got two experts that are all coming in, talking about the engineering of this, and they contradict each other. So if you have a professional engineer who's a third party unrelated to anybody, that's going to review it, come back and give feedback to the board, and the building department, yes, I agree with this engineer and I disagree with this engineer, and that's, and that's part of the process.
Part of the process.
Yeah, well, that's what it should be, that should be a process.
Yeah.
I think, I think one thing we would say is, well, whatever process happens, should happen at the beginning.
Yeah.
I think the biggest gap right now is, what we see and what Nelson Pope clearly saw was, this is happening at the boards. Where the first time that people start arguing about this at the boards, that's really too late in the process, it should not be happening at the boards, it should be at the very beginning of the process.
And I think that starts really with the work that Chick Wories and these guys are going to do in developing really solid, thorough checklist, that everybody, it's a package when you come in and you say, I'm going to do a small addition, or I'm going to do a knockdown, I'm in a FEMA Zone, I'm in a R, you know, 20 zone, what do I need? And I'm in the historic district, I'm not, and that's, that's the goal behind it, so you know the rules up front, and what the expectations are, and I think it'll eliminate a lot of the problems that we're running into.
Right, so I think from a process point of view, I think one thought, we think is part of this, is try to clean up the process, and make it more transparent, easier to understand, and then more efficient going forward, and I think the final point, again, for us is to make sure the boards work in coordination rather than as isolated. coordination rather than as isolated silos, which we think they tend to at this point. And so an applicant will hear different things from different boards, and the applicant, honestly, I think, and certainly applicants representatives get very frustrated and feel the board shouldn't be doing something because they've already got that clearance from another board or that, that judgment from another board. That really should not be happening, that should really be much earlier in the, in the process. So, should we talk a little bit about zoning recommendations?
Just one other process, I don't know where this would fit in, but I think that we should require an electronic file.
Right.
So, you know, that would make it much easier, there were many instances where individuals tried to get information on applications and were given a runaround, they were told to go to the architect, they were told to go to the builder, and, and meetings occurred prior to them being able to get access to information. And I think it would also help, you, you have board members who aren't able to attend meetings, if they can see a summary file or some, some pieces of the, of the puzzle that can be emailed to them in Florida or wherever they happen to be, that would, I think, be very helpful. So that should be, I think, a requirement.
Right, which means, which is a take from a, from a technical point of view, you set it up, so when an, when an applet case is given to the go-ahead of the building department to move forward to the boards, it goes online and anyone can go and see what the application says.
I, I don't know, I'm not sure I'd be, be happy with that as a design professional.
Because?
Well, you know, suddenly my, my plan is something that can be captured and, and used elsewhere or reproduced or, or sold somewhere else. You know, there, there, once, once it's available online-
Can I ask people, just one person talking at a time? Go ahead, you're talking.
Once it's, we all know that once something's online, it, it's basically out in the, in the universe and-
I must agree with Bill that I also think that, you know, I think that this electronic submission, I think it's, even in New York City where we submit the plans and we get actual review online, it's strictly in-house only to the building department, the electronic files don't get distributed.
Although the actions are online, so you can actually see the actions online.
But the plans are not online, the plans are not online. And the plans are not even distributed.
How about renderings?
Those, those can be online, those are all online.
So I mean, I mean, what you need is, you need something so that I know, am I getting a shingled house next door or am I getting an airplane hangar?
Right.
The file is available to be viewed at the building department, so anybody can go to the building department and view the file, it's another distributor.
Well, you know, this time of year, how many people are here to go to the building department? You know, obviously, I, I think what we're trying to do is make this a process that works for everybody.
Whenever I, I'm required to send notices, you know, for a public hearing.
Right.
And when I, when I do that, I, I include a letter saying, and, and my phone number and the offer and any party who's interested in, as an interested neighbor in this. And I will be helpful to them. I, I feel that when I, when I submit to the thing, I have nothing to hide and I'll be cooperative in, in providing someone a paper copy.
Right. I mean, one thing that would be helpful certainly, and it's fairly common, is listing what variances are being requested, so people know what it is that someone's asking to do.
That's on the public news.
Right, but it's, they're sometimes very hard, I mean, I guess one of the things I would talk about also, I think maybe Chick will be hopefully doing, is a plain English rule, so people understand what it means, which is often hard in these notices. Yes?
If I could have a comment, John Bennett. One of the things that I think hasn't been spoken about is the historic restrictions and allowances on height. And I think one of the things that Mayor Epple said when, certainly when he was reviewing the, some of the exemptions, applications, as well as during the public hearing for the moratorium, is that in certain areas you have homes that are, that are rather large and have rather extreme, not extreme, I should say, fairly well-articulated gables. I don't know if people are aware of this, but in the, until 1973, in the village code, in the O1 residential district, the height allowance for a house in the O1 residential district was primarily the, is the estate area. The height restrictions in the O1 district was three and a half stories, 45 feet. And many of the homes that people see as a signature for the, I'm sorry, I should have brought more, many of the homes that people see are the signature homes for the, for the village of Southampton who were built before any of these limitations, but also under these limitations. So this, this restriction, both, the homes that were constructed both before this restriction and this restriction, which pertain, what I'm handing you is a 63 zoning map and a 63 code, but these restrictions pertain from 1930 when it was first a zoning code in the village of Southampton, and 1973. In the estate area, you can have a three and a half story, 45 foot high home.
Actually, this is interesting because I'm looking at this and in that O1 zone, for that three and a half story house, you have to have 175 foot wide lot, which is interesting because that's actually one of the things that I've thought about, is that the smaller lots may be the more troublesome lots.
No, but you, no, that's if you were going to create a subdivided new lot, you could have had a, a home that didn't conform with that, but nevertheless still get the benefit of this, a height restriction, if you have a pre-existing non-conforming lot in a, in the zone, the height restriction, you don't lose that height benefit by having a house a lot of less than 80,000 square feet.
Wait, did it say that?
It says right here-
Well, just under general zoning, if you're, if I-
No, I'm not, not seeing where it says what you just said.
I will tell you that the zoning codes don't take away a height restriction because you have a non-conforming lot in a given zone.
Okay, but that's not on this sheet.
That was back then, John, that got changed, that was back then.
No, no, no.
Generally, if I have-
Okay, I get your point, but that's not what's here on this sheet, so on this sheet is 175 feet.
I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that it was there, but you have to go back and look at the zoning code, 1930, 1973. But what, that, that does, that does create a, a portion of the established neighborhood, not even the homes that were built before 1930, but the homes that were built between 1930 and 1973, or maybe 73 or 78. So my point is the homes in the village of Southampton have always been higher than the homes in a lot of the surrounding, surrounding communities. And, and that's an important point, because you can't just view these things in a historical vacuum, you have to view it throughout the, throughout the continuum of what has been built and what has been allowed in the village of Southampton in the past. So many of these homes-
This is interesting because it also has height limits of 30 feet and 25 feet for the O4 and the O5 zones, so that actually it was lower than our current.
Yeah, but none of those zones, you wouldn't find any of those zones in the, in the flood zones.
Right. Well, a lot of this was not flood, flood zone at the time anyway.
Well, there was no flood zone, there were no flood zones at that time.
So, so is it your perception that what has been presented by Nelson Pope in some ways is in conflict with what you just said?
No, what I'm saying is you, what you have to do is you have to take a look at the village as a whole, number one. I think Nelson Pope's thought of, of keeping with the base flood plain plus one, which is consistent with the way it's been done in the village, but, but for one foot, is a good idea. I think, and I don't think that the, the side pyramid, the side pyramid limitations are that, are, are, are not something that most people would be able to live with, and if they can't, there's always the zoning board appeals, but I have my concerns about the front yard, the flood plain, I think that might be a little too extreme. And I also have my concerns about the required, if I've read it correctly, the undulation or modulation required on facades. I don't think that's something that the zoning, that the, that the code should talk about. I think that should be left to the architectural review board, because that's the design review board that is, is charged with it. I'm hesitant to have you create zoning restrictions that strip away the ability to design a house that's appropriate for the area. I think unfortunately, what I hear from, from, from good architects is they have to design too often to, too many dimensional restrictions. So I don't necessarily think that that would be, that's just my comment, I don't, I don't see the need for that.
I mean, I, I think our approach has been, I mean, these are all very interesting and, and helpful. You know, our approach has been that given the sort of different character of the village from other villages in the East End, I, I think to some extent we review that we chose to do more form-based zoning. And actually, you know, I think as you're aware, our zoning is much less restrictive than many of the, the other vill, vill, villages in many ways. And so we made a choice, unlike some other villages, to, to really restrict through the form of the house. And that's obviously what we've done in the small lots, and I think that's what we're talking about here in the bigger lots. I think what you trade for that, though, honestly, and to some extent it is a balance, is in exchange for that, there's more, there's some control over the form of the house because you're not doing what other villages are doing and setting as strict a limit on height and size and other items. So, you know, to some extent it's a pick your, you know, you have to sort of pick where you want the, the restrictions to come in. And I think what we did in the smaller zones in a little bit what Nelson Pope has ended up proposing in the FEMA zone is that, you know, and, and you may be right, it may be in some cases you provide less freedom than you would, because it, I would say in some ways, if you take another village, it may be that your house is smaller by, by the zoning and your house is less tall from the zoning, but within that, they're not as, as restrictive as we are on form. So I think a little bit what we've tried to do is say, and again, I think everyone has a different perception, but our, our perception, and we took a tour, which I thought was incredibly helpful, of the historic houses in the section, very much what you're saying here, that some of them were very tall, what was different about them historically is how they were placed on the lot and how they, how they related to the neighbors around it. And I think what we saw happening in more recent houses is it wasn't just, it wasn't necessarily in every case an issue was size, it was the extent to which the way the envelope was being filled out was having a real impact on the houses around it in a way that was very different than a 1930s house. And so that's what they think this is trying to address, because, and I think you're right, to some extent it will mean in some cases architects will have to say, well, I'm somewhat restricted on form unless I want to go and get a variance, so.
The other thing, the other comment I had, and I'll be quiet, but I think it's very important, whenever you impose, what's that old proverb, Procrustes, he would take everyone who traveled through the, and he'd put them on a bed and if they didn't fit this note, he would cut their limbs off. You have to be very careful of doing that in the village. I think certain areas would require certain restrictions. So for example, from a design point of view, because I think this is as much about design as it is dimensions, even though it's not necessarily being said that. But, you know, and I hope down the road I'm not getting yelled at by some client, but for me, for example, what has happened not only historically but typically is on Gin Lane, and when I say Gin Lane, I mean from Old Town Road to the Meadow Club, there are, I think there's maybe one modern house there. It's that round house near Kreider, and then maybe there's a contemporary house on Little Plains. I don't know why the village is not looking at, and this may or may not would be within the ambit of what you're talking about, I don't know why the village isn't looking at a, a series of design requirements on Gin Lane, because if you look at it, the village has pretty much held the line in terms of contemporary construction on Gin Lane. As a matter of fact, recently in the architectural review board, there is a contemporary house proposed at 450 Gin Lane, and after some back and forth with the architectural review board, a traditional house was proposed and approved there. So you may want to look at a design overlay district for, for Gin Lane, because, you know, sometimes when you paint with too broad of a brush, you ignore what's happened all around. I don't know necessarily that you want this, you, you could have a design restriction on Gin Lane that wouldn't necessarily apply. My thoughts, anyway, thank you for your-
Thank you.
But just to respond a little bit to your point is that I think in this case what we are looking at is that the FEMA regulations, which actually require two feet, the state regulations are two feet above-
A free board, yes.
Two feet of free board, there is such an enormous impact in that area where, you know, between grade and where that base elevation is like, sometimes like 14 feet. So this has a tremendous impact on a neighbor and on the general character of the area.
Yeah, but it's not something that the person is doing necessarily willingly, you know, number one.
Well, but it impacts everybody else in the neighborhood in our community, and that's what we are trying to address, such that how do you minimize the impact of meeting those new requirements from FEMA to the insurance.
I understand, but one thing that I've also asked the village to look at, and it's very, very important, is why with the mapping, people went from an AE8 to a VE16. Does someone tell me in the last 20 years-
Good luck.
The thought has been that the flood, in a flood event, the flood's gonna be nine feet higher? I mean, I think the village should, should really attack that mapping because I think some of it is suspect. And, and then these issues wouldn't have, wouldn't have, wouldn't be before you. Why on, in certain sections of Meadow Lane are people that were in an AE8 are now in a VE16? And indeed that VE16 zone even bleeds across the street. There are, there are homes on the north side of Meadow Lane, and I'm not talking on the barrier beach, on the north side that are a VE16, and to me, that makes no sense at all. So what happens is they're being penalized, so maybe what the village should do is ask that area that you map.
Yeah, and, and then please don't, don't think I'm defending FEMA because I'm not, that's for sure. But I will say to you, in the last storm, the real damage was from the bay, not from the ocean. So I, I think, I think what I would say, and again, I'm not defending FEMA, please don't think I am, is-
And that, and the bayside, it went down.
The climate, the, yeah, the, yeah, the climate-
Well, that's the crazy thing, the weather went down.
Is really changing the way things are impacted.
But that, 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 that impacts the validity of the mapping as well, because there are people on the bayside, and your point is well taken, where some of them that are in-
It went down, it went down five feet, I remember, I was like, one.
But I, what I would encourage you to do, and I'm very serious about this, is to the extent you have comments, it would be very useful for us to get them, because we really are gonna try to move it and we're trying to, we're trying to get as many comments as we can, so, and, you know, we're gonna hear from, I want to hear from all sides, so it's, I don't mean you're one side or the other, but, but it would be very, seriously, it'd be very helpful if you could send us comments so that as we're thinking about this, we can incorporate.
Thanks for struggling.
Thank you.
John, John. Yes, John brought up two points I think are, are important. You're, you're, my name is, by the way, I'm Bill Stuy, I'm an architect. The, the form-based character of what Nelson Pope is, 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 comes up with, seems to make a certain amount of sense. Their presentation is, is a little bit thin on how that would be actually codified, particularly with regard to the, what they call the articulation. And they said that, that for instance, for some homes that, that may have been, may be affected by the front pyramid, where, where certain exceptions could be made for gables and things like that, you know, and, and, you know, they said that a certain, they say a percentage of the, of the facade could be allowed to, to intrude upon that, but they don't, they don't say what percentage that would be. There's also provisions for what they call dormers and drab house drabbers and things like that. But once again, it's not really made clear within what, what the presentation that they made of how that would be, would be played out. So it's, it's difficult as a, as a design professional, for me, to evaluate what kind of impacts that might have. For instance, they may say, well, a, a, a front-facing gable, we're only gonna limit it to 16 feet, but, but we may find that the type of rooms that, that typically might, might evolve might, might need to be a bit wider.
Right, right.
For instance.
Right.
The other thing is that there seems to me, in that evaluation that they presented, there seems to be either a prejudice toward or ignorance, a prejudice toward, in favor of traditional design homes, or a prejudice against, or a lack of understanding of modern design. Modern design has fewer, you might say, rules. And so they basically say, okay, well, a modern house, we're going to cap it at 27 feet, and that's it. What you end up with if you do that, as far as modern design, are a lot of boxes, shoeboxes. Okay? And they have, the only way that the architect can articulate it is by making it in plan a C shape or an H shape.
Right, right.
Beyond that, they don't have much chance. But if the form-based thing would allow, as you seem to be trending toward allowing certain exceptions for gables and things like that, if a certain percentage of the building could be higher, for instance, you could have a long narrow box, but imagine that three quarters of the way down, there was one element that broke that height line.
Right, right, right.
So that makes it a more interesting design. And it wouldn't necessarily have to add square footage to the house, it simply could provide more height to a certain area. Or it could provide a place in these FEMA zones where mechanical equipment could be placed on the roof.
Right, right.
At a higher level, because in the FEMA zones, you're not permitted to have mechanicals on the FEMA levels, so you end up having to claim valuable real estate or square footage within the house in order to provide mechanicals. When you're doing the flat roofed house, you end up with an interstitial space that, for instance, on the upper, at the roof, where ducks would have to go across, and so you end up eating up what might be called valuable volume for those types of things that this design form does not take account into having to provide, how to provide those type of things. So what you end up with is a prejudice toward or a community that only has traditional design homes. Now let me make one final point, I'll stop. The most appropriate place in an area such as we live, for modern design homes, is the oceanfront. They, a modern design home, because of its interplay with the horizon, the uninterrupted sky plane, because there's lower vegetation or no vegetation, that's the place where modern design really stands out and fits into what you might say, an appropriate environment. And the types of things that this community in particular, as different from Sagaponic and Waynescott and East Hampton, has made it very difficult for architects who are interested in modern design to build your homes. And, you know, there's a prejudice within the community against it. And I think that what it's doing is preventing the community to reflect the homes that are reflective of the era in which they are built. Architecture is dynamic. Each different phase of the culture, each different period of the culture has architecture that is representative of that part of the culture and the vocabulary of that time. And if we have a community that stops at 1890 and doesn't provide any type of architecture expression beyond that, we're not being expressive of our time.
Other comments?
I do think the historic district has been a great tool, and we've seen that if the building community looks at that and adheres to what I think the historic district is trying to do, is it would allow Meadow Lane and further west to have more modern homes, but to still keep the core historic district intact. And I do think the community feels strongly about trying to keep those historic buildings and homes as part of the community. And so I think we can fit them in, but I know John was mentioning about 450. I did have an opportunity to speak with some different individuals, and I think when you read our code, you certainly would look at that initial structure that was proposed and say, you know, there may be some concerns about this, because it was very different from what the historic district proposes and specifically states, you know, that the houses should pay homage to those that are immediately adjacent. And I think we also have to look in the context of the size of lots.
Right.
And when you look at something like Wolden Manor, which is a four-story house, or you look at Villa Maria, these places were originally built on 25 acres or 20 acres. We now have Wolden Manor on six acres. It was originally, two years ago, on 16 acres.
Six acres isn't so bad.
So it's not so bad, but.
Some of us would take six acres.
But when it gets to three acres, and you put another house in there, and now you're going to have four other houses on top of that.
Right, right. It does change the context.
It does change the context. And, you know, so often we see these plans for some of the homes, and, you know, I think to some extent, they are presented almost in a vacuum. They don't show the context of the neighborhood. And so I think it's really critical to make sure that we see that context.
I think one of the things, just Jake, in the context of what you're saying, is I think one of the things that has come across, which is good news, is I think the code, our historic code is actually pretty good. I think the issue is providing the level of assistance and information so the boards understand how to apply it. And I would note, you know, what's interesting is the short code doesn't in itself require houses to be built in a traditional style. They do require houses to be built in a way sympathetic to the historic fabric. I think those are not always the same, clearly, but certainly I think better knowledge of the code would help the boards in their applying it.
I can't let one comment pass you.
Okay.
There seems to be a certain satisfaction in the community that the house that was designed for 450, the original modern house, was abandoned by the owners and they went to a traditional house. One of the reasons that they did that was the difficulty that they were having in getting it approved. As an architect, I can tell you that the house that was originally designed there was a very beautiful and classic, would have been a landmark house as far as modern design goes. It was designed by a very good architect, and if you understood architecture, you would see in that house a modern interpretation of classic elements. And it is really a sign of ignorance in the community to not allow a house that conformed in every other regard to the zoning codes. It was built within the setbacks and the height limitations and everything, and it was projected to on the basis of its aesthetics. And the fact was, the aesthetics were very beautiful, I just not understood. And it happened to have water bodies on two sides of it, which would even make it more appropriate, you know, it wasn't across the street from traditional houses, it was just flanked by traditional houses. And it was really a loss to the community that the owners abandoned that modern design. And it was, and I think it's a shame on the community that they compelled them to do that.
So just so everyone understands, at the planning question, we don't review and really critique?
No, but I'm just sensing a certain satisfaction.
No, I understand your comments.
Satisfaction that I've heard elsewhere, that, oh, we managed to defeat that modern design.
I appreciate your comments.
And this is coming from a person, I'm not considered to be a modernist, but I am an architect, and I understand modern design, and I think that it has a place in our community.
I certainly appreciate your comments. We don't opine, we've been very careful not to opine on individual applications, it's not our role. I would say we have not, and again, you know, we've not used yet, so maybe people will decide to do that, but we have, in our case, and some other towns have chosen to act a different manner, we, I think what we've said is, there's form-based zoning, you can use your form in whatever way you want from our point of view, and I take your comments on how modern houses would deal with form-based zoning are very helpful, very helpful, and we'll take a look at that. Any other comments on the proposal?
So, sorry, Nick, one comment, because I think a lot of the comments were very interesting. But in terms of consistency, I think I just wanted to point out, and I've mentioned this before, I mentioned this in our meetings and so on and so forth, that we are, what is being proposed is not consistent with the town of East Hampton, the village of Southampton, Sag Harbor, Sagaponic, or the town, because in terms of height.
Right.
So the height, just so, I don't know, most people here are probably aware, but the town and the village of East Hampton measure from natural grade, not from the FEMA height, they use the existing height that's in the code from natural grade. In the town of Southampton, measures the full height from the FEMA, but there's an overall cap, a 40-foot cap. So that's just so we're aware that we're definitely proposing a higher height limit than any other jurisdiction, just importantly know that.
Right.
And I know a lot of people have mentioned that the reason for that is that the character of our village is different in terms of height.
Right.
And there definitely are some higher houses, but I think that the thing that we've kind of been zeroing in on a little bit is to look at those larger houses in the context of larger lots.
Correct, correct.
And this was interesting with John Brian, because it actually does address lot size with these heights, because it has lot widths, which we don't currently really look at.
Right.
So I think that could be a really interesting.
Yeah, I agree. I think one of the interesting things happened from our conversation over the last month is the thought that maybe the narrow lots should have a different height limit, just the nature of those lots.
Because it's, I don't think it was trying to penalize someone.
In most cases it will, and that's what Nelson Pope's looking at, it may not in every case. Right.
And I think the issue is, no one's trying to penalize someone about having a tall house, but it's the, it's the conflict with neighbors. It seems to be one of the issues that's really kind of coming up.
Right, it's the envelope. So we're going, I'd like to move this to some recommendations to the trustees. So I would encourage everyone to please make any additional comments. This has been very helpful tonight. And I think at the next meeting, we will hopefully try to come to some sort of recommendations. And I just want to mention, we're going to, Nelson Pope's drawings will go online, so everyone will be able to take a look at them, and again, any comments you have would be incredibly helpful. So they're looking again.
I think Mr. Slade had a good point, though, is we can't comment on the form base until we actually see what they're talking about. Is that going to be?
Yes, yes, that's also, I'm sorry, I meant to mention that, thank you. Oh, yes, in addition to that, they're going to put on those drawings what they would recommend in terms of dormers and items like that. And please, feel free to comment, feel free to send us an email, you know, whatever form you can, it's very helpful. One thing I would say that's helpful for us is getting these comments before the meeting is helpful, so we can talk about it. Sometimes it's a little hard to think in your feet, so if we have a few days to think about it, it's very helpful. Any other questions, comments? Yes?
I understand that Southampton is different, but the height differences from all the other villages is pretty dramatic, in our situation here.
I would make two comments. Number one, there are many things that are controlling size and height, it's not just the pure height restriction, so I think that's a little bit overstated.
Okay.
But secondly, you know, and I think in fantasy to Mr. Bennett, there is, from a historical, and we found this in, you know, it was the same issue we found in the small zones, there is much more of a history of two and a half and three-story houses here than in almost any other village on the East End. It just is what it is. And I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying if you actually look at the pattern.
But are the stories, to me, there's a grandiosity of this, you know, huge.
Well, I think what's happened, just let me actually put your point in a different reference, which is what's happened is that, and I think we said this at the beginning, is when those were done in 1920, say.
Yeah.
They did that in a form where they didn't fill out the entire, they tended not to fill out the entire envelope.
Right.
What's been happening in recent years, and clearly part of what's causing the, you know, the issues we've seen and some of the concerns, is I think given, and partially it's the economic that had, the economy that has developed in the village to this point, given what someone's paying for a piece of land at this point, they are going to figure out whatever way they can to fill out the envelope. So we're assuming, and this will not necessarily be the case, but when we look at zoning, we're assuming everyone's going to use every square inch they're legally permitted.
Right, true.
And so that, we're looking, and to that extent, I would say, that's a different context than 1920, when people were not necessarily building every square inch they did.
Well, if you look at a photograph of like, any part of Southampton from like, the 20s or the 30s, it's like a vast desert with these things coming out.
That was lack of landscaping.
Yeah. I don't think they did landscaping, but they weren't next on top of each other.
No, they weren't.
And so it has a completely different feel.
Yeah, they were very large.
And their neighbors were not looking into their bedrooms.
You don't think so?
I'm not going to opine on the morals of the 1920s, but if you could argue with that. Those who've been watching, definitely. So if there are no more comments, thank you very much, and we'll close the meeting.